Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, September 6th. Or, excuse me, Monday, September 23rd, 2024, 6:00 PM here in the Land Use Hearing Room. Present this evening is myself, Chairman Jason Perone, Vice Chair Diane Gale, Clerk Doug Moblen, CAO Nicole Parker, and Assistant CAO Nadine Signoni. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Phelps, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the British Isles, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in its justice.
Next thing I am on the agenda is public comments. We'll start with the audience present. Is there anyone interested in making a public comment? Lee Hamburg?
Yes, Lee Hamburg, 48 South Holley Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the Southwick Historical Society. I just wanted to share with the Select Board that our organization is asking for CPC funds to purchase 74 College Highway, place a conservation restriction on it, create a land management plan, provide a kiosk with information, rules, and a map, and finally allow public access with a trail. On September 18th, the CPC, Community Preservation Committee unanimously voted in favor of the project in the public will benefit in a variety of ways. The project will conserve rural landscape. It will also help to preserve what is identified as a heritage landscape. And the general public will have access to the property for passive recreation. And it will be accomplished without the town incurring any liability exposure. There will be no additional need for insurance coverage, no need to maintain the property, no impact on property taxes with use of CPC funds. And if the Conservation Commission agrees to hold a conservation restriction, the town would have the power to inspect the property and enforce the CR. Now, earlier this year, the price on the property was $900,000. And that was based on potential use as a marijuana growth facility. Because the permits have lapsed, the price dropped to $275,000, then $250,000. And the society has since negotiated a price of $175,000 for the 10.52 acre industrial restricted zone parcel. Combined with legal closing signage miscellaneous costs, the request is for $220,750. We're asking that a special town meeting be called this fall and that this project be placed on the board so the citizens of Southwick can have the opportunity to vote on it. Thank you.
I don't know how the other board members feel, but I'm fully in support of what CPC has done, so. You know, I know that's actually former park of the Moore Farm, correct?
Yes, it had approximately 185 acres that went all the way to Conymon Lakes, I believe, at that time.
I have a point of order, Mr. Chairman. I believe the agenda has the incorrect Zoom address on it, and I believe that there's people awaiting to join that meeting via Zoom versus the one that is being broadcast out on Channel 15. So I don't know how you want to reconcile that, but we probably should figure that out.
Okay.
Probably worth taking a moment, because one person texted me already.
Why don't we, we'll take a momentary recess to try and figure this out.
Okay.
Meeting back to order. And we're on new business. Is there anyone else in the audience that has any new business that they'd like to propose or speak about? Mr. Phelps?
Marcus Phelps, 28 Depot Street. I'd like to echo Lee Hamburg's comments. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Southwick Historical Society, and I've been involved in this project to acquire 74 College Highway. I'll be working with Sabrina Poehler in drafting the warrant article. And it would be helpful at your next meeting if there could be an agenda item for this topic. And it's important that we do get a decision on having the special town meeting as we're involved with developing the sale with the, or the purchase from the seller. So one of the key things is that there will be a special town meeting, and then funds hopefully would be forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anyone else in the audience? If not, I'm going to turn to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make any sort of public comments? At this time, it looks like there is no further public comments. We're going to move on to new business, item four on the agenda. Item A, we're going to have economic development count. Any presentation for the College Highway changes, Mr. Diley?
Yes, come up. Right, Greg Diley, 10 Salem Road, Chair of Economic Development Commission. I'll try to make this quick. I think the concepts are simple. We did a survey of our businesses earlier this year and gave them 10 priorities. The top one was shop local and then promote Southwick as recreational. But one of them that rated really high was one that said to upgrade our main business corridors to make them more pleasant and attractive to potential customers. So that combined with our, the adoption of our new master plan that has as a primary strategy to enhance the town center's livable, workable, and walkable neighborhood. We're proposing a couple of things that we think would help the businesses and help achieve our master plan goals. And this is in two parts. The first part is to reduce the town center's speed limit by 10 miles an hour from the existing, from tractor supply down to IBS. It's 40 miles an hour now. Reduce that to 30. And the rest of the way to Town Hall, it's 35, reduce to 25. Go to the next slide. Part of the concept of this, if we look at the Massachusetts general laws, it has certain default speed limits that say if it's a business district or densely populated, you know, it should be considered unless otherwise posted to be 30 miles an hour. And we're 17% higher than that in the town center and 33% higher than that in the north end of it. So next, and they consider that what is reasonable and proper. Then the car crash from the Department of Transportation shows that since January 1st of 2021, nearly 40% of our car crashes in the yellow area are in that one and a half miles of highway that's in the town center. And, you know, one and a half miles compared to the other 90 some miles of roads in the town is a high proportion. Go on to the next slide. Don't know why the color disappeared, but.
I'm sharing the screen because the folks on Zoom couldn't see your presence.
Anyway, another point is safety for pedestrians, that the risk to pedestrians increases exponentially with speed. And you can see a dramatic difference at around 25 miles an hour. It might be 25% severe injury where it's 90% if you go up to 46 or 75% at 38. And the reason for that is, if you remember your physics, that force varies by the square velocity. So twice as fast means four times the force. Next slide. And then turns are a problem. I've heard people say there's certain times of day they won't turn into a place downtown because it's too hard to turn back out, especially if it's a left turn of the traffic. And that, the, the lead space you need varies greatly with, with speed as well. Not only because the oncoming traffic is coming a lot faster, but you also have to, it takes longer to get up to traffic speed. So there's a dramatic change in the amount of space you need to leave. And so it's, it's just exponentially harder to turn out when, when the speed is faster. Next slide. And then I did a test, not very scientific, but I drove 10 times between here and Tractor Supply. And I can sit, you know, I'm using town center as the part that has sidewalks on both sides, which is basically that distance, one and a half miles. And I did it five times at the current posted speed limit and five times as though it were posted 10 miles an hour slower. And the average difference was only 14 seconds. Now, you may get different results depending on, this was during the middle of the day. And in the middle of the day, there's no way you can go at full speed right through because you have people turning. So you slow down while they're turning. You get stopped at traffic lights, et cetera. So you're, the faster you go, the more you're just switching between brake and accelerator. And then I'm not going to go into this, but I just wanted to point out that there are laws related to speed limits and how to change them. And, you know, somebody who is a lawyer can figure this all out, but I know that Worcester was the latest city that just earlier this month changed the citywide speed limit to 25 miles an hour. And they did it by unanimous vote of their city council. And they, they followed Westfield doing that and, and I think in 2017, Boston and Springfield did it as well. So there is a process that revolved the legislature, and of course, town meeting is our legislature. Now, whether we need to do that or not, I, you know, let somebody decide, but, you know, the process could be to take it to a vote in town meeting. And then because it's a state highway, it would then have to be also approved by the State Department of Highways. So, point being that there is a legal process. Then the second part of the proposal is to add two or three crosswalks in the town center. And what I mean is between the traffic lights. I know there are crosswalks at the traffic lights, but it's a long way. If you're going from the summer house across to the shop, you're not going to walk, you know, an extra half mile or more down to the traffic light and back. And there's really no reasonable way to walk across when traffic is going 35, 40, 45 miles an hour. Scroll down. It can be as, as cheap and as simple as painting on the crosswalk. And here's an example from Lee. They have a kind of a brick red. The color is gone. And with white lines outlining it, which stands out very clearly. I know you can do it a lot more expensively and, you know, lay in brick and whatever, but they do it there. And even in Stockbridge has nice green crosswalks and they stand out nicely. Scroll on down. You can also use flexible traffic delineators. These are things like a crosswalk delineator that will, you know, flex. If you run over it, it won't damage it. They're also easy to remove for snow plowing or parades or whatever reason. And you could also scroll a little bit more, use some poles. And here's an example. It's, it's, you can't really see it in black and white, but it could stand out quite boldly. And it also takes away the, the idea that this is just a superhighway going through the middle of town. The traffic engineers talk about edge friction, which is something you want to get rid of on a highway, but you want to have a certain amount of that in town because it's a signal to slow down and go to the next slide. Because there are two modes of driving and we all do it. There's full attention mode, which you do where there's narrow streets, lots of shops, turning cars, pedestrians, bicycles. You're in full attention. You're looking, paying attention. And then there's a partial autopilot. When you're on a highway and you're, you're reading, listening to the radio, you're, you're kind of in an autopilot mode. We don't want people going through town in autopilot. Makes it a lot more dangerous. Scroll on down to next. So here's a summary of the pros and cons as as I see it. Maybe you can come up with others, but, you know, the pros are safer for the drivers and pedestrians, better for the town center businesses, easier to turn on the College Highway, especially a lot of turns. Reduction in traffic noise level, both in engine noise and tire noise when traffic goes slower, makes it more pleasant. Calm or less stressful driving experience. Want people, want the traffic to calm down. I have neighbors that say they avoid going through Southwick. It's, they're older. Oh, that's scary to drive down through there. People go so fast and that middle lane is tricky and you don't want people to avoid our town center. Had no one person out of business since they moved it from there, but they were right near the top of the hill and, and middle of Southwick and said they were terrified sometimes with the speed those cars would come over the hill. And there's a limited sight view over the center. Of course, much easier to walk across College Highway, and it's an important start for our master plan goals. And our master plan says 2040, but we don't want to wait till 2040. We want to, the, the concept is to find the easiest and simplest things, do them right away, then go on and find the next easiest and simple things. And I know that there, you know, some of the things brought up, we, we voted on it in our economic development on the presentation unanimously endorsed it. The only question is, well, maybe we should extend it even further, but I purposely, for the purpose of economic development, limited to that center and, and maybe separate proposals if there are other areas. You don't want to make it so big that it's hard to do. So. And the only con I could think of is it might add 14 seconds to your drive time. So that's it. And so the, the idea is to throw it out for, and I'll say that I talked informally to Kirk Sanders about some of the efforts he's had in the past working with, trying to get speed limits changed on college highways. You know, he was policeman for 40 years in Southwick. He said he used to have trouble. They were resistant, but he thinks maybe the guy that was so resistant is gone. Plus, I think the whole environment has changed yet. That was eight, nine years ago. So it's worth trying again, even if, you know, we found there were some difficulties in the past. You know, the difference between us and Westfield is that they maintain their part of College Highway and state does ours. So that's why we have a little less leverage there, but I think it's, you know, especially if we had a town vote, I can't see them saying, no, we're going to make you go faster. Any, any questions?
Well, they're all, they're obviously all good things. I don't know about calmer, less stressful driving experience. My experience with people on the road just makes it worse, but more impatient. You know, it's one of the things I actually, when I started bringing some of my goals to Nicole, actually, and I spoke with Randy about it. We definitely need some sort of crosswalks in the College Highway area. When I first looked at ideas just for the crosswalks, you know, Summer House was, I actually watched, what made, brought it to my attention is, I forget where I was and I saw this family with their kids trying to run across the street. And, you know, like you said, one of the businesses, you know, I know a lot of folks, they've told me they won't go to certain ones in the morning, like you said, because you can't turn left because you can't, you can't trust what's coming over the hill. You can't see it. So, you know, there'd be some, definitely some stuff that's got to be done. Chief Vanish, you, you, when you heard the, you said you reached out. I heard you went down to the state today.
I did reach out to state DOT. I mean, I'll address first your crosswalks. The engineer did say all those now have to be.
Do you want to come up so everybody can hear better?
If you can talk loud or talk into that thing.
Come on up. Front and center. You hear me now?
We can talk louder so they can hear you.
But she had microphones in there.
Can everybody hear me? Okay, sure. So, yeah, so starting with the crosswalks, I did reach out to Bao Wang. He's one of the engineers over at Mass DOT. He said it's not as cheap and easy as paint, obviously. It all has to be engineered. Everything has to be ADA compliant. I actually looked a little bit closer at the picture that was presented. And the very top sidewalk goes right into a curb on both sides. There's no curb out there. Aside from that, I'll just give you the email response I got from him. Good morning, Chief. Attaches a Mass DOT Speed Zoning Manual. Any changes to the speed limit will need to be approved by Mass DOT per Chapter 9018. Since this is a state-owned highway, we will do a study and make any changes as appropriate. So that was his response. He was actually emailed a copy of this. So I think the state's made it pretty apparent that it's their road, it's their decision. I mean, I'm not going to get into whether it's appropriate or not at this point. Obviously, we've got to deal with, with the state to begin with, so.
What did they say as far as the, I mean, like I said, I know what you're dealing with.
No, you're talking, you know, signs, signals, the whole nine yards, unfortunately. So if they didn't give you a price, I didn't ask for a price.
My question to that would be, were they resistant to that idea? It's not, not so much the speed.
I think he said they would be hard pressed as far as the crosswalks. Yeah, I mean, you got to remember this road was re-engineered. Is Randy on by chance? Randy, do you recall how long ago that College Highway was rebuilt and through the center?
Yeah, yeah, it was around 2010, 2011 timeframe.
Okay. And at that point, they looked at, obviously, speed limits, they had looked at crosswalks, they looked at everything up through the center, so. You know, could they go back and look again? Yeah, absolutely. I don't know if, where we are now as opposed to that and it's going to warrant it for them, but, you know, it's worth a phone call or an email.
They're big on the road diets lately.
Of course, I haven't, I have been after them to basically redo all the lines, and I've been waiting for, I don't know, a year and a half at this point.
Well, thank you for the input, Chief. Sure. Greg?
I just think it's worth.
Oh, definitely worth looking into, yeah.
Yeah. And the, I'm just, the reason I said it's simple as paint is because I see it in other towns. And they're on, you know, in Lee, it's Route 20, Federal Highway. And yeah, I understand the curves and I repositioned it in my latest version, so it did not go into a curve. And, and you would have to change some of the, you maybe have to have one-way entrances and exits to limit the turning points, which might be better anyway. It might be safer.
I mean, I grew up here. I can remember trying to get out of what was the old post office at the time, which is a bike shop. And you go and make a right turn on the Saturday. It was brutal down there.
And if it could help to have a town vote, it might be harder for them to resist the will of the people. I have talked to people for a couple of years about this, and I've not yet encountered somebody who was against it.
I think a couple of things. One is there is a process, and Randy can probably come in at the end here. It was, it's fairly recent legislation where you can petition Mastoff to reevaluate. And I think they alluded to that, that process, because we had talked about actually South College Highway where the speed limit is 50 to the state line, about taking that down a notch or two. But I think part of the problem with College Highway is, A, the natural topography there, that you have to be really careful where you're going to put a crosswalk at any speed because of the psych distances, you know, using just north of where you had one of those crosswalks marked at that, the church entry and exit. It's a really bad spot.
Yeah, those were just roughs. And I would say I would not recommend any crosswalks until we change the speed.
But I think one of the things that you did allude to, and it, it's a point worth bringing up is the surrounding, what do you, I think you call it edge noise or edge friction?
Friction.
Edge friction. So a few years ago, maybe more than a few now, there was actually a pretty active group in town that locally was called the Pretty Committee. And their idea was to kind of beautify or try to spruce up that center corridor, i.e. plantings, benches, as they came through with the reconstruction of College Highway. Great idea, and it would have created that surface friction, which would have been a natural, at least keep people closer to the speed limit than, you know, the average speed is usually at or above what is the speed limit there. Unless Ernie's working, then it's at or below. But there was zero support at the time, zero support from the businesses in the town of Southwick to take responsibility and ownership of that. Whether it was a matter of watering the plants, dusting off the benches, didn't matter. Nope, not a business owner up and down College Highway where those sidewalks are going, were interested in the upkeep and maintenance of that infrastructure. Because I agree with you. I think that the road friction would help you in reducing speeds along College Highway. And also anecdotally, and I don't have any data to prove it, during the week, I think the weekend traffic in the town of Southwick is much tougher to get in and out of places along College Highway than it is, say, on a weekday morning when people are going to and from work or even at lunch hour when people are going to and from restaurants or other businesses in town. It's Saturday morning, it's peak traffic in the town of Southwick. Again, it's anecdotal, right? I just, from being out and about, I commute through there every day, twice a day, and usually out and about on the weekends, but that's just my take on it from, from what I read from the proposal. And, you know, it might be worth taking a look at that from as EDC or, or working with the businesses that, you know, that have, you know, say, what can we do about the, the speed on College Highway? Well, part of it might be some of this either re-architecting some of the entrances and exits to these parking lots to be more conducive to turning, turning motions and/or adding things at the edge of the sidewalks without invading the sidewalk as an HC axis and stuff, but to see if it creates some of that friction, which would be a natural calming effect on the traffic through the center.
I even saw a study just a few days ago that studied bike lanes with and without. It slowed the traffic down and made it safer.
You're 100% right about the edge friction. I, I don't know if I agree with you or not yet. I haven't really thought it all the way through about taking a speed limit down and what's the impact on commerce and so on and so forth, but just from, you know, I completely agree about the edge friction, but I, I think we should have some more dialogue around, you know, what could be done to kind of narrow that corridor, because it does get wide, especially right through the center between Chabelles and, and Depot Street. It's fairly wide, open expanse with paving on both sides. You know, there's not a lot of trees or street trees or shrubbery or benches or anything that would cause that to.
Yeah, and I personally think that that appearance, that edge friction, whatever you want to call it, is more important than the speed limit.
I don't disagree with you, Ed.
It sends a signal.
I think it's premature to do one thing only because it's easy without knowing what the end result is going to be. And I don't mean the end result of speed limit. What's the end result of all those master plan goals? This might be quick and dirty, but does it fit in what the total plan is going to be? And are we going to regret jumping to do this one thing without knowing any of the other things that are going to come into play? What's your end, what's your end game?
Well, it's, it's better to do little things, partly because if they don't work, you can back off of them. You get this whole big master thing and implement it all at once.
But we have eight chapters with tasks and recommendations by eight, with eight different views. All eight of them cannot go out and do their easiest things without a plan. And this is why we need Master Plan Implementation Committee. Something has to coordinate even the easy stuff into the big picture. That's my take.
I owed Randy to chime in on what I alluded to at the beginning about what was. Uh, I owed Randy to chime in on what I alluded to at the beginning about what was the process. I know we had discussed it on this board not a year ago about the process to petition Mast D O T. To look at speed limits. I just don't want to shortchange France.
Yeah, I, I can, so there is a process like everything else with, with government, right? Um, so if D O T gets involved, they would first start with a, with a traffic study. And, and I think one of the indicators is going to look at any, if there's any crash or crash history on this road. Um, and that'll dictate whether they, they, they recommend that there are crosswalks here or not. That's the first step. I mean, if you want to pursue this, I, you know, we certainly got to start with D O T. Um, but I, 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 I will say that, um, if they are looking, if they do allow a crosswalk, it's not going to be as simple as paint. They're going to certainly want to have some kind of a crosswalk signalization. Um, right now, D O T is really pushing these, it's called rectangular rapid flashing beacons. That's a system we have on Congamon Road by the rail trail crossing. I'm certain that would be. At a minimum, that would be required at any crossing. That helps.
And that's a question, is it a full-blown light instead of a crosswalk?
You said, I think you got a crawl. Uh, I, I, I think it's not a bad idea. I think it's, the ideas. Of trying to increase. I think the, the side friction is, is the right answer to me, rather than just taking on the speed limits, because I think you're not going to be able to. Just like any other road where they have the design speed, the actual speed and the posted speed, and sometimes they don't have anything to do with each other, right? So, you know, South College Highway is probably engineered for north of fifty, it's posted at fifty, I don't know what the average speed is in there, but people are probably. At or above it, and if you brought it down, you know, a couple of miles an hour. To forty-five or forty, would it lower the speed limit to closer to the designs? You know, that's the type of thing. Um, as far as, you know, and, and what's the end result of. You know, for this, it may have some unintended consequence with, with flow of traffic through College Highway, and especially weekdays and, and, and in the afternoons when there's not a ton of traffic there. But, um, I think that there's opportunities to make that place look better, bring in, it, it'll bring. The features closer to the road, which would have a natural calming effect. That's, that's just my opinion.
Well, you know, I always said I'll talk about anything, so we started talking about it.
Hundred percent.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Randy.
Oh, yes, sorry, Randy. All right. New business item B, discussion and vote for reduction in first week of early voting hours.
She is keeping statistics because she has to send reports into the state, and we are mandated to have these early voting hours. Um, and it was consistent with the last four years, it was the same voting hour, so she was just keeping. Pretty consistent to stay at seventy-five percent and not reduce all the way down to fifty percent. But it does have to be a vote of four.
And she was, she is keeping track of all of this.
She has to.
As I said to you before, there was a question whether we were going to have early voting or were required, right? Was it the mail-in that she was asking about?
I think it was mailing for the locals.
The local, okay.
When we. And, and early voting hours for the local, and we, we already, I think. Separate from this, because that was more about, you know, people have more than ample opportunity to cast a ballot. It was just, do we want to have. Early voting hours in May for the local, I think is what that was about.
Okay. So, when we need a motion to approve these hours for early voting, correct? I would make that motion.
You'd make that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call vote, Jason Coron, aye.
Aye.
Doug Mobin, aye.
Item C is discussion and vote for inter-municipal agreement regarding the drainage system that Suffield built on Massachusetts land. Randy?
So I met with, uh, Suffield D P W Director Lee Corbett a couple of weeks ago on site. Uh, as you know, there was, um, issue that came to head over the summer with some drainage and, uh, property disputes on South Pond. So as it turns out, the drainage system that Suffield installed a couple of years, um, I'm not sure, maybe seven, eight years ago, I believe. It is, uh, was actually. I guess is, is within Massachusetts, but I think we can probably settle the dispute where the property line is. So that comes to a point, well, now that there's a system in place, who's going to maintain it? So I met with, uh, Lee Corbett, he says Suffield has no issues maintaining that system. Uh, but I think it'd be prudent to put that in, um, into a formal agreement between the two towns. Um, Lee said that would not be an issue with him, and as I started looking into it, it's not crystal clear. Um, the town, the town has no property in that area. Uh, the area where the drainage was installed is, is on the, the, the town, not the town, but the. Beach Association property, I believe, which the town has no interest in. So. The way I see it, I think in order to kind of clear our, our end of it is to, um, put forth an M O U between the two towns. And basically let, let Suffield deal with any right-of-way issues that need to be dealt with. Uh, to obtain the permission from the landowner to maintain that system in perpetuity. So if that works on your end, I'll pers, continue to pursue that with, with Suffield.
I did want, um. Ben Foyle or whoever his land use expert is to look at this, and I don't believe he has. So I would request that they look at that and make sure that's all it needs to be. If it blows up and floods people or sends stuff into.
The other way.
If it ends up going, sending stuff into the lake, whose problem is it? It's a little bit bigger than just where it sits, it's what happens if it. Gets contaminated, to me. So I would like to have counsel look at that.
Have, um. Have been, whoever the land re, represented is.
He's, he had wind of it, we just never made it a priority. We never went back to him and said, look at this further, so I would like him to.
This is the piece we saw this summer, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
I mean, it still wasn't known what was where.
Chapter seven.
It was turned into the Concom, because they did all this work without a notice of intent or nothing, certainly within the riverfront, hundred percent. Um, secondly, we probably should ask to have a member on their conservation commission as a result of this M O U. Kidding about the second part, but seriously though, it was pretty obvious that, that drainage structure. Well, wasn't, it wasn't exactly obvious, but it was pretty obvious that it was in the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
And it's fifty feet at the end of a driveway and daylights at the waterfront. It's a pretty interesting piece of structure, and, uh, I, I thought the same thing when I first saw it, I don't like, if that's in the Commonwealth, they did that completely unpermitted. Work without any notice to the Conservation Commission in the Commonwealth.
And this is why council should look at this for, for those reasons, conservation issues on it as well.
And I don't know what that structure underneath, if it has a sump or if it has any, I have no idea, so.
I don't think they know either, because they can't find it, so.
They let the, let the smarter folks have a look at that than.
Carry that over.
Look at it and carry that over. Thank you.
All right, Randy's probably not going to go too far. Item D, discussion vote, fiscal year twenty-five snowplow contractor rates.
So I, I sent you a letter, uh, asking to, uh, consider a couple of changes to our snowplow rates this year. Uh, first is a increase in our hourly rate, uh, the increase of ten dollars per hour. Uh, in addition to that, I'd like to explore a, like a sign-on bonus. Uh, this is something that a lot of towns do as an incentive to keep, maintain their contractors. A lot of them have expressed the concern of the rising costs of insurance in particular. Um, that it's, you know, no longer feasible or economically viable for them to continue plowing. For municipalities, last couple of years, there has not been a lot of snow. So the sign-on bonus would give them a little bit of a, a, a buffer, uh, and, and insurance, I guess, if you call it. That they'll get at least, uh, some of the money that they put forth to obtain the insurance at the beginning of the snow season. I did reach out to a couple of our local neighbors to kind of get an idea where they are with their plow rates. Um, it's not in this letter, but I got some information from Westfield this morning. Uh, their rates are going up fifteen dollars an hour over last year. Uh, just to compare to where we're at, their, their, their light-duty truck. Which is comparable to what we pay for our, our trucks, uh, is going up to one hundred forty dollars per hour. Um, I have not heard from Agwam yet, but I believe, I do know that they are exploring a, uh, sign-on bonus this year. Something they have not offered in the past, and, um, I know Springfield increased their sign-on bonus up to a thousand dollars this year. So what I'm, what I proposed for you today is, uh, what I think is a minimum that we need to consider to remain. Competitive with our, with our neighboring communities.
You know, sign-on bonus, Randy. I, I, I'm going to speak for myself, I'm not opposed to that, actually, I. What I do on the side, uh, well, I do this down south. In Connecticut with my machine and a lot of places now that you sign a contract, then it doesn't matter if it snows or not. So, um, the sign-on bonus, and that's, that's what a lot of people are doing. Because there's no guarantee you're going to make any money dropping off your machine and leaving it there. Uh, because of the way the winters have been, so a lot, I, I can understand where you're coming from as far as retaining our. Snowplow operators, um. I, you know, I'm not opposed to what you're proposing, but I'm one of three.
I kind of am.
You am what?
Kind of opposed to it.
You and I can, obviously.
It's a contract they're signing up for. That, that's the risk of a contract.
I know, right? I'm just, uh, it's what we're here for.
Blizzard and Blizzard and Blizzard and Blizzard, and we're not going to cough up anymore at the end either. If they have to come out three more times.
Well, well, we will.
We will, but.
I think the way this is written. It's kind of covers the insurance, right? I think the hedge has always been, if you're, as, as a snowplow, um, contractor is. You have to buy insurance going into the season. If it doesn't snow, you lose. If it snows a lot, you win. Uh, the last couple of years have been miserable kind of for the snowplow guys. Um, because there's not enough storms to call them out often enough to, to really make money. Um, so some of the, some of the contractors have been hesitant, in fact, you know, I think we had one contractor bail on us at the first storm, they didn't even show up.
Yeah.
That was because of insurance.
Yeah, well, because of insurance. So this performance bonus, if you will, is, is kind of a. If they, if we pay that, it kind of helps them with that insurance payment upfront. Now, if it snows twice a week for the entire winter, they're going to get an extra. You know, seven hundred and fifty dollars a truck for the season, plus the hourly rate that when we call them in, they're going to come in and they're going to get paid for that time, so. It does take some of the risk, it de-risks the insurance payment for the snowplow operator. Because historically, it's always been a bit of a, a bit of a gamble by the snowplow operator, and they pray for snow. They pay their money, and it's gone up every year on the insurance side, um. And then if it snows a lot, at some point they break even and start making money. If it doesn't snow a lot, they never cross-break even. That's, that's the long and short of it. So then I, and. Randy, you know, I think that's what you're alluding to here is the. Seven hundred and fifty dollars is a sign-on and a tenants' bonus is, and I don't know when you're going to pay that, would you pay it at the end of the season? Um, but it would, it would help them defray that initial cost of insurance that they have to get, and, and lowers the point at which they break even. As a plow operator.
I, I understand that. But whose risk is it? Is it the taxpayers' risk or is it the business owner's risk?
They also pose a risk if nobody wants to sign on.
Well, that, that's the de-risking part, right? So the risk is today, I mean, we look at, um. It is the taxpayers is, is de-risking the snowplow operator, but it's also making the roads passable. In a timely fashion when it does snow, because if we can't recruit operators. Then it's going to take just that much longer with the operators that we do get to clear the roads.
And a prime example of it was last year, look at, there were signboards all over fifty-seven, they couldn't get, they couldn't, the state can't. It's a little bit different there because the problem there is how long you wait to get paid with the state. So, um, but it is a problem. Honestly, the contractor I worked aside for, when he told me, I said, you didn't have a locked-in contract on this, what do you? I'm going to be honest, is that you're out of your mind?
Right.
And, uh, so, you know, that's the way it's going. I mean, it's going that route to the point where you, there's. How like Doug said, that the, the risk is there, if I'm going to leave a fifty, sixty, seventy, a hundred thousand dollar machine there. And I don't get to use it, I've now, I lost, completely lost. And then we get one big giant storm. You know, that's a two-day storm, it, it's worth it for them, but.
And, and we're, you know, we, uh, we always try to make, you know, be competitive to. Other communities where, you know, the, the plow guys could go to another community, whether it's, you know, north. East or even south of us, right? And we've been lucky, and, and, you know, I, kudos to the folks that have done work in our town for, for years and years and years. Um, you know, last year was a good example, though, for me. Um, that first storm we had in November, everyone thought we were going to have a great winter, turned out to be a bust after that, but. One of the main contractors, yeah, they were also the folks that were supposed to maintain the public safety complex. Um, including the police and fire station, so the town had to marshal their own resources and you, and commit our equipment. Um, to keep the firehouse and the police station open.
And how did that work?
At the expense of, well, we had to give up, you had, it was done at the expense of the other roads on those routes by the, by the town.
Longer they're out, then you're paying overtime for them anyways.
Correct.
Well, we like to stay competitive, and, you know, we compare to Westfield and Agwam, we compared to Westfield and Agwam last year, and we raised ours. And they're stayed the same.
No, those, those rates are from last year. I, I didn't have, Agwam has not made a decision yet. And Wesel gave me their rates today, which I, which I gave you. So I, I think that we are, we are, we need to be competitive with our neighboring communities. And the answer to the question, the answer to the question, the bonus will be paid at the end of the season.
These are the same rates in your letter from last year that they had for twenty-two and twenty, year twenty-two to twenty-three. And then this year's is twenty-three to twenty-four. I understand you just got their twenty-five. But in your letter last year, they're exactly the same. So we went up to meet them, and they didn't change. So we are competitive. Until they just changed this year. They're going to change this year now. I, I'm just one, I, I, I just. Where are we going to come up with that money now? Because we're raising a lot of stuff. And hiring a lot of people.
Nobody wants to spend.
Where are we going to get it? What are we raising?
Do it free cash, and it's, it's small, Bob, it's.
I know where that comes from, that's, I know.
I, I, I understand where it comes from.
I'm talking about the whole bucket, not.
I, I can't.
Which pocket this comes from.
I'm not, I've, I'm.
I get that.
I get, I get to your side of it as well, but. It's the cost of doing business, as they, they, they put it that way. If everybody else, you know, they're, they're not going to, they're not going to come if they don't, if I can go next door and make thirty dollars. Well, fifteen dollars an hour more over there.
There's only, only so many they can hire too. Until they're saturated with drivers, and then nobody's going to make any money, because they're only on the road for four, not eight. Because there's so many of them.
I know, that's why they lock in these times.
Randy, do you know what, on the insurance for these, is it per truck, or does each company buy a policy amongst, for the whole, um, for the whole company?
Uh, I, I'd imagine most of these, it's built, they have, uh, if it's a company. Like, um, like, like, uh, Mark's Property Services. You know, they're, they're a landscaping company, they probably, their, their insurance, they have a, an add-on or rider. To incorporate, to include snow plowing. That's my guess, but I'm not sure, I'm not positive.
I think that would be a good question to ask, because instead of a, you know. A per-truck deal, maybe it is, you know, if it's the de-risk and they're making an investment in that rider, it's not meant to. I, I understand the premise to de-risk this. For some of the operators and, you know, maintain a competitive rate, but perhaps it might be. More equitable rather than on a per truck basis, it should be more in line with what the policy is that they're buying. And so, and I don't know the answer, so maybe we could ask you to come back next week and say, hey. I, I did look this, I talked to Mark and I talked to somebody else and, you know, they pay. Ten thousand dollars for the policy for the year. You know, for the snowplow rider. If they have two trucks or four trucks, it doesn't matter. But if they come back and say, no, it's, you know, twenty-five hundred dollars a truck for, for a year, well, that might. Might impact our decision-making process on this and, and in talking about this. Dollar amount.
I can reach out and ask, that's fine.
What does their extra insurance cover?
What does it cover? It covers uh, automobile liability. Which I think is a two, a two million dollars per occurrence. It's written into our, into our um, contract.
Those are our rules that we make them deliver that policy with us as an additional named insured for them to operate on our roads. As a contractor.
And what would it cost if we put them as named insureds on ours? And we charge them for what that is?
I don't know about that.
Is that an option?
Well, it, it doesn't sound like we're gonna come to a consensus this evening.
We're discussing options. Is that an option?
That, that's, we, you know. Something we need to look into.
I don't know, you have, you have to call them special.
I guess, with Mr. Mogan, I, I, I'd be inclined to go, what Mr. Mogan said, get some, do a little bit more research. And make sure.
That's what I'm asking.
And then uh, you know, that's fine, absolutely. We will, Randy, can you just do the more research for us and then I'll have. Nicole, if you want, look into it and see if that's even a lot of possibility.
Yep, and, and just so you know, I, I have an answer on the insurance. So we asked for three hundred thousand dollars of general liability. And a million dollars of auto liability. And the town of Southwick shall be named additionally insured. And that's, that's, I believe, standard of. Other communities, like I've seen the same language.
Alright, so I guess we're gonna do some more research and bring it back for the next meeting. Also, yes, alrighty. Alright. Uh, item D, discussion and vote on the HCA approval.
This should be pretty simple now. There's a couple of open questions in it. That we need to just fill in the blanks firmly. I think, I assume you've all gone through it numerous times as well, and. It is for the most part, the CCC model, except for, as I said, I threw in a few little other. Secure words. For the protection of the town. And. Mine's in color.
Best question while you're looking.
Sure you can.
Are we in agreement as a board that we're not even gonna try to negotiate an impact fee?
I am.
Correct.
You are in agreement or?
I'm, I'm in agreement.
Oh, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
The problems that the impact fee has.
That has been from the get-go.
They've made it such, yeah.
Correct. In the, you know.
Alright, so the first question is on page eight of this in the box. Other occurring, generally occurring fees. Is there anything blurring that I've missed? I did throw in any other that may be assessed in the future or, you know, in the future, but is there anything? Like, you know, missing.
Highlighted.
What's that?
You said you had your, this A grade.
Yeah, in the box.
I think you cover yourself with the, any of their local fees generally assessed upon a similarly situated.
Right, and then just below that. Um. In the event the company ceases operations, et cetera, et cetera, um. Those fees will be due within thirty days. Other towns run the gamut. Thirty, suitable to everybody.
It doesn't really much matter, to be honest, with this deal. If, if they go out of business, they'll be chasing the money forever anyway, so you could make it five days or five, six days.
I, I have no problem with changing that.
On page nine. Uh, how many years do we want this initial agreement to be? The other towns I've looked at run from three, five, seven.
I don't know that we even have the ability to go much beyond that, but I would say three. That'd be my.
That's what I had plugged in.
Three is fine with me.
Um. I do need to clean up references in this document. They didn't come out of this. Um, I just inserted where I got some things for your information. And um. Advanced notice on page ten, if they're gonna discontinue. Advance notice again, if they just close the doors, they close the doors, but ninety days suitable to everybody? Or do you want longer?
That's fine as far as you can forecast that you're gonna close unless you lost your lease.
Yeah.
Something like that, it could be. Okay, and then finally, um, who is going to sign this? Is it the select board or is it the C A O?
Yeah, it was the select.
That's what I thought, okay. And um. Then can I just uh, remind you later to ask you about email addresses for. General mailboxes. If you make a note of that, please. And then. That is all we need to. Answer, and then if there's no more discussion or questions on it. Think we're good?
We can vote to get a.
Do, no more questions?
No more questions. Not gonna drag this one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt this version of the host community agreement and. Um, that's one motion.
Second.
Roll call, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
And then second question is who is going to do the negotiation? Does this? Does Nicole take that on? And come back to us if there's any modifications from the other side? You, you did one in the past with somebody.
Yeah.
How did that go?
We had a designated member of the select board. Um, in cooperation with town council and the C A O.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion to have you do it.
Alright. I'll second, can I second you?
Can you get that license plate?
Roll call, Jason Peron, I.
Thank you, I.
Doug Morgan, I.
Alright, that's done. I will get a clean copy to. Margaret to have everybody finalize. Or I'll give her this marked up with just those few changes and then you can get that ready to sign, right?
Sure.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Here, so topic E. Discussion and vote on North Pond Task Force recommendations.
Okay, y'all got that lengthy document. So, uh. First, I wanna thank the uh, members who participated on this. Everybody did, um. You know, came ready to. Put stuff to paper and we gave assignments out to people and they came back with. The stuff um, in good form, in good time, and we were able to do this just in two meetings. Um, we haven't disbanded officially yet, cause we may come back. With what's going on today. Um, but basically, we um. Are addressing the parking area. And uh, the street parking. The restoration of the area. And how that should happen. How it should be closed off, where it should be closed off. The signage. In the parking lot with all the rules, signage in the streets, signage within the conservation area. Um, we proposed a bylaw, which you have a pretty complete draft of. That will help with enforcement of the rules that are then posted and various ways and places we can post those rules besides just on the property. And um, some consideration on funding, and I have some updates on the funding when you get to that, so um. I, I think we are all, we were all pretty much in agreement. These are the required steps, whether it's in this minute detail. Some of it needs more detail. I would imagine we would, if we choose to. Pursue the. Comprehensive bylaw, we would have another subcommittee to. Clean that, narrow that up and get other parties involved to review it. I did review it with. Others, but. I assume that's how we would go on that. So. I assume you've all read all of that?
I'm reviewing it again.
I wanna thank the folks that. Served on that task force and came back rather quickly, whether they were. And folks that even attended the meetings and, and were able to chime in. I mean, there was some, I. I heard there was some great input from all around on that. And how we can try to address. You know, some of the issues that were going on up there and how we can restore that property and have it utilized how. The C R intended it and the voters of the town of Southwick. Uh, envisioned it being used. Um. Frankly, while he's looking, the only thing that I had, um, just as a commentary was that I heard. Um. One, it seemed like an awful lot of no parking signs, but um, I, I get it, there's. People smarter than I have the rules on how far apart those are supposed to be, but I'd like, if, if, that probably has to be advertised and probably have to have a public hearing on it. But I, I did wanna get out there and maybe as part of the notice that. Maybe we date limit that by month. For that, so that we can enable folks to, cause that does get used for other purposes. At certain months of the year that have never been a problem. It's never been on my radar until someone actually said it to me on South Long Yard.
One of, one of the options is, it, it isn't inherent, and we talked about it afterward. One of the options is um. To reduce the, the length of span that those signs are. That the no, the street parking is reduced, the span that that is. Um, and Randy said he could probably knock off maybe seventy signs if we do that and cut the budget on that to like nine thousand dollars. If we did. Uh, did I put in the plan B? Fewer on street, on South Long Yard and then just, no, resident parking only on every side street. The other option Chief Vanish said we could do is put those temporary signs up every year.
Sure, good, or at least a portion of them.
Yeah.
But I know that there's um, someone had mentioned to me, and there, more than one person mentioned that. Um. That in hunting season, that there's often a need for parking on South Long Yard in those mornings and. I didn't wanna, I'm not trying to get in the way of that at all, and I don't want that being perceived as such. This was really to, if we're gonna cut that parking lot down.
With the discussion.
Which is the best idea.
Add on this, I think I even mentioned to the north, the primary example was our side streets is Westfield State College. They have the same. Everything where between. This period, this period, these hours, these hours, you need a sticker. Uh, I, I'm all for what you're saying, Mr. Morgan. Um, I wouldn't wanna. Probably completely ban that all year long. Year round, because we know when the problem time is. It's. I, I'm.
Well, like, they don't need to go the entire span and they can go just before that and then during the season that it's necessary, then the temporary signs go up. Further down.
I, I would be, yeah, I would.
So.
We also are no.
This is a big picture. This isn't for us to decide what the plan is tonight. This is a bigger picture with, with those options to discuss and. You know, if there's anything in here that. As a board, we say is off the table, then that narrows down the things to be done.
Yeah.
But um.
Well, I do wanna talk about, what is it? Um, that section B.
What are you looking for?
Snow vehicles and recreation vehicles. I want more clarification on that.
I'm. It's on the. Where are you talking? We have block A.
Traffic, parking, motorized vehicle regulations, it would be B.
Oh, you're on the bylaw?
Yeah. This is something else we wanna talk about, I agree.
What page are you at? What is it?
Uh, what actually?
What section are you?
It would be. Section double X dash eight.
Eight?
Yeah, traffic, parking, motorized vehicle regulations. It would be such.
Just, just so people know what we're talking about, the bylaw that is being proposed here is a comprehensive bylaw that. Um. Would be. Parks, beaches, conservation and preservation areas bylaw. Which would cover all, all of our current and any future. Town-owned and managed properties. So these are a global, it's not specific to an area. It was thought about all of the areas in future areas we might have and problems. Um, so in section eight. Um. What clarification do you?
I'm gonna let that right say, I'm opposed to it. Everything else I'm fine with.
Express where, except where expressly designated and permitted.
Not, not section B though. Except on trails marked and designated for use for all public owned properties. I'm not, that one isn't good for me.
That is already, that's why the note is in there. That is Mass General Law, Chapter Ninety B, Section Twenty-Six.
Well, checked in Ninety B, Section Twenty-Six is. A pain, I can tell you that as a former.
It's all, well, you have an issue with the state.
Well, don't get me, yeah, don't get me going on off-road vehicle access for the state of Massachusetts.
That's why it's there.
So, um. I understand what you're saying. I, I just. I'm gonna say my heart, where my heart stays, I'm, I'm against that one. Just gonna say.
Well, that's not with the, that's not with the town bylaw, that is with the state. This is just repeating what the state is.
I get it.
And this is on the town-owned.
I get it.
Parks, beaches.
Uh, I'm, I get it. I'm just gonna say.
Okay.
Where I stand on that one.
Okay.
Everything else I'm fine with.
Okay. Uh, one thing I think I did omit in the signage was also perhaps a contribution to no trespassing signs on the neighbors' properties. Bordering our problem areas. And um, we did talk about in a different meeting, some public education on trespass laws. Which could also benefit the situation.
Yeah, the situation I'm talking about too. Trespassing.
Is what?
Trespass for internal permission, so. I just don't wanna, it's, it's really, I said, I'm just. As a former recreator in this, well, I'm still a recreator in this town of the motorized persuasion, I'm just, it's.
We're not making.
I just, I'm just saying, I'm, 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 I'm just saying, I'm personally opposed to that, so. I wanna make that one point to be clear.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, again, I'm one of three, so.
Again, in that comprehensive bylaw, there's a couple of insertions of notes and questions to consider, but again, that would be with a, a different um, task force or subcommittee.
Yeah, this is gonna have to come back, but I think the whole point of this. And Jay, uh, Mr. Peron, I, I understand where you're coming from, I think, but the whole point of this is. This is very preliminary. This would have to come back to a group and then come back in front of this board for a hearing. Um. But the whole, the whole. Um. Point of having a bylaw was that I think this whole. This situation and others have identified a weak point in. The town code and enforcement there too, and the ability of anyone to enforce. Rules and regulations as, you know, posted or not posted, or, you know, something on a webpage and, you know, somebody says, hey, you can't do that. Where does it say that? There's no sign, it's on a webpage somewhere. So this, this would give you the ability to. To post some of those rules and, and, and the ability to enforce them by whether it's. Um. The police department or the sheriff's deputies or. Um, or anyone else for that matter, if we deputize them to do it.
Right, and like it's in that bylaw, giving you some references where that came from. Some of it is Mass General Law, some of it is um. Heady outreach to law enforcement sources. Heady outreach to law enforcement sources. Um I pulled some parts from our existing. Sort of related bylaws and changed the language a little bit, like noise comes from the dog barking bylaw we already have, and I just. Massaged it to fit this situation.
Well, I agree, and I agree with you.
I complete with everything, it's just.
I mean, I looked at it.
Philosophically. No, and I, and I think you, you take a look at some of the properties that we have, and perhaps there is an opportunity, whether, and you know, I don't know. If the piece we was, that was mentioned in public comment tonight is appropriate as part of a C R to allow, you know. Snowmobiles or something, if if the, if there's the right amount of snow and and the land is conducive and it's not, you know. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know.
But that's perfect example of a future prob.
Yeah, a hypothetical example of.
Except that's not your problem, that's our problem.
Well, right, because that's gonna be, who who's gonna end up owning that, Lee?
The Historical Society.
Society, so it would not be our problem. It wouldn't even be subject to these rules, because it wouldn't be a town property.
Okay, unless they convey to the town later after it's painted a duty.
And openly, I wouldn't see this do exact, I mean, I think.
I get it, no, I, I get.
I don't want to see this do exactly what we envisioned for this whole time. I just, you know, that's all. I said, I said like this. But I'll, I'll, I were all, it's fully support.
Again, this, this task force did this.
You got the great and really fast.
Not with any personal likes or dislikes to the task. It was. Public safety, preservation of the area, thinking about all the other properties where people may migrate to if we. Close down on this one, because that's a consideration too. Um, and that's where we got on this.
I know all about migrating.
So, um, I don't know what else you got other questions in it, where do we want to take now?
I guess we did take a.
Next step.
A wider look at this.
Tear it apart and make sure it's. I'm okay with.
So how do we proceed?
I guess we gotta have it worked over, right? Gotta make sure the things.
By who? Again, these are recommendations brought to the select board. What is the select board going to recommend? And how are we going to do that?
Well, you have multiple landowners, if you will, that are in, that are impacted. I know as you've mentioned, you know, conservation certainly involved, park and rec is involved. We're tangentially involved, right, but. It's really gonna be up to the the bylaw itself, and as far as the remediation for the piece on. On uh the North Pond Conservation Area, I think really the. Some of the, the suggestions about that, their restoration activities are. I'm not an official comment, other than they look solid to me. I was a big believer from the very beginning that just. Reducing down that parking lot and getting, you know, and and. Implementing some common sense parking rules up and down South Long Yard in that neighborhood will go a long way. I appreciate the fact that other people looked at that as you, if you. Do that, you may move the problem to other areas in town, so good. Now we've got this bylaw here with rules and regulations that you can address that, so.
Yeah, they don't all have the water, they don't all have the water feature right now that draws people, but.
Well, but I mean, you've got a future, future water park at Wally Park, you've got the gorge. There's other places in town where people, and we saw it even just to our. Uh friendly city to the south of us, where there was some large gatherings right in Safield on private property that were. You know, that were, were an issue later in the summer. Um, so I think this is a step in the right direction. I think we just got to keep moving ahead and it, you know, I think. From what I read, I think Randy or somebody had come up with some preliminary designs to. To reduce the parking lot and with public safeties concurrents, you know, whatever, I don't know what we need to do in order to implement that.
Well, that's, um, I mean, next week, do you want to? Come back and. Vote on, yes, we want to do this, we want to do this, let's do this.
I'm fine with that, absolutely.
All right, I may have found us a gate to block. The ATV access, I spy one in the woods somewhere, I'm gonna go see if I can get it. So they'll cut.
Make sure it's not a private property.
Cut the budget down a little bit, um but then anything that we say we're going to do, we need to find some money to do it, but as well. So.
Okay, we'll bring it back.
And uh get creative on how we can find some money too then.
Yeah, but the next meeting.
All right, um. And I will share, I will share this with Conservation Park and Rec and uh. Heady and Fire already have it.
Oh.
Um, anybody else we think of then?
All right, next, um, item F, other new business. I have none.
I have no other new business.
I got an easy one for you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mr. Neil Parkin is going to be visiting the town of Southwick on the twenty eighth of October. Who is Neil Park? I'm glad you asked. So he is on the city council, basically of Southwick, England. Um, and he will be visiting uh former moderator Putnam. Um, Mr. Parkin was very nice to send some greetings and some stuff to us, and we had a couple of Zoom calls during COVID. And he sent, him and the entire council sent greetings to us when we had our two fiftieth a couple of years ago. Um, and I just wanted to to let you know that Mr. Perkins will be in the town of Southwick on the twenty eighth, and I did extend an offer to host. Um, have one or more of us attend some kind of brief meeting here at town hall and perhaps a quick tour of. Of our town hall and then um. To create a certificate for.
Is he gonna join us for our select?
I hope not, I hope not. I hope he has better things to do, um but he's on the Adder and Worthing councils. Um.
Addy?
Adder, A D U R, but I did, uh, it's the council that oversees Southwick, England.
Yeah, you have some interesting info.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention and certainly would welcome Mr. Perkins to town. Um, my other item is, and it's funny that you brought it up tonight, because I had it on my list of things. Uh, our town emails are a little bit inconsistent. And I'd like to see them made more consistent to aid in communications with citizens that want to reach anyone in the, in the town hall. So generally, most of our emails is first initial last name at SouthwickMA.gov, but there's some curious ones that are not. So I propose or suggest that uh I T folks look at. Redoing some emails of people to to be that, to that standard. But if there's anything else that we want to have, that's great, you can just alias it to another person. So if you wanted to have one that.
I wanted to talk about.
Like SB admin, which was one I saw tonight, or like there's one for cemetery. Great, run email to cemetery, type it to cemetery, but it goes to whoever it is. Now with the changeover, for example, at DPW is a recent uh retirement. That person, whoever comes into that role should have their first name, last initials, and we can always forward DPW to. Someone else, but you can have those as aliases, but at least it provides some consistency to folks. Just a thought.
Yeah, that.
So that's why.
Always confused me.
Well, especially if they wore multiple hats, right? It gotta leave it more confusing, but, you know, and and um. And that also happens, you know, you may have someone who's on more than one board, but their email is. This, and it it does look a little confusing. This way they can have that email and, you know, uh. You know, you you can use Ms. Anderson as an example, right, but, you know, because she was.
You put Lisa Anderson at this, but she's not there anymore. Now you have to change all your documents. If you just say select board admin, whoever it is gets that alias pointed to their. It just copies to their. Specific even, right? So easy to do. Yes, because that was exactly where I was going.
All right.
It's, so new business?
All right, I was gonna say, well. Do you have?
I do have one piece of business. Um, as we were. You know, as I, as I've been going to different meetings and talking to the public and talking to um. You know, basically our seniors or some of the housing authorities. Um, public transportation was a big issue, so we had reached out to P B T A. Um, to see that, do we have public transportation? And we do not in this rural area. Uh, P B T is willing to, but they want to apply for a grant. Um, with Ferta, who we use here in town now, and um. Frankham Regional Transit Authority, and um they would connect, they would uh have a new route in town. Um, Southwick to grocery stores and medical providers in Westfield and North Hampton, uh but they need a letter of support from the board. That to go with their, their grant um application, so. If you are inclined to support this endeavor of P B T A, then they would need an. Executed letter of support, which I have if you are.
Well, because the people that don't have that access and and that are limited in their transportation modes. You know, I would definitely want to see the routes where they're gonna go, and I wouldn't have a problem with it personally.
I am absolutely in support of it. It's on page. Something or other in here of the master plan as to contact P B. T A to see if we can get that route going. Absolutely support that. And even if when I do it for a year, if they work it out for a year, with limited routes and see how it goes.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said to you before.
Yep.
Mr. Peron. You've said your piece. I'm good. Do we uh just, just need a letter?
Yeah, you just have to sign the letter.
We need a motion, we need?
I think a motion to uh have you sign the letter of support.
Make a motion to have Jason sign a letter of support for a grant application by P B T A. For a trial route.
I'll second the motion. Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Danielle.
Doug Mogan abstained. Uh, Nadine, any new business?
No, sir.
All right, old business, topic A. Appointments, boards and commissions, interview, appoint list attached, anyone?
Why is that always me?
Actually, you took that on.
Today, we are going to appoint the cultural council. Who are now in agreement with us on what their terms are and in agreement with the town clerk and with the state. So, and we have a couple of corrections to priors, so we are going to just restate. What those are. Beginning with Steve Frazinski, he was. Reappointed last year to ten nineteen twenty three. Uh, I'm sorry, ten nineteen twenty three to nine one twenty five, a really wonky term. He is now, his term is now going to expire six thirty twenty six as it should have been. Last we, time we met, we appointed Sabrina Poehler. She is actually filling the remaining term of a resignation, so her. Term is now going to end six thirty twenty six. We are going to appoint Ellen Miles, reappoint Ellen Miles. To serve her next term, seven one twenty four to six thirty twenty seven. We are going to correct Bruce Kulis. His term is expiring six thirty twenty five. Cynthia Ann Warner, we are correcting her term to six thirty twenty five. And those two were just entered incorrectly into the onboarding. We are going to retroactively. Reappoint Barbara Westcott from seven one twenty three to expire six thirty twenty six. She should have been on last year's list and was somehow committed. We are reappointing currently Susan Kohanski, seven one twenty four to six thirty twenty seven. And then missing completely from the onboarding is Pat McMahon. We are retroactively appointing her as well, seven one twenty three to six thirty twenty five. That completes the cultural council and in sync.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Danielle, I.
Doug Mogan, yes.
The other one we need to still look at is like management, we attempted to correct those last year. Um, somehow the town clerk misinterpreted what those corrections were. So I have to resync those and next time we meet, I will have that like this. Who's on first?
All right, topic B.
Hold on, sorry.
Didn't we have one more to do?
We have the planning board, but they're not on there, huh?
Didn't we have to fix L E P C? Did we leave off Sabrina Poehler from L E?
Oh, yes, we did.
So I'd make a motion to appoint Sabrina Poehler to the local emergency planning committee. I think it was in, in inadvertent.
Just wasn't read out.
Omission during our appointment process probably three weeks ago.
Thank you. I'll second that, sorry.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, I.
Danielle.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Hmm?
Contribution.
Yeah, in her role as conservation.
No, 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 we.
Oh, we didn't do that yet.
We don't, they're not on the agenda today.
Well, appointments, boards and commissions, interview and appoint, they're all there.
Are we interviewing all these people? Oh, the return, the the ones who are looking for reappointment, oh.
I'm sure we did discuss.
Oh, that's what we meant by that part, okay. All right.
I guess. They didn't come down here to see us, I assure you.
You never know.
I thought they were here about the comprehensive bylaw and North Pond Task Force.
I'm pretty sure that's why they're here.
All right, invite somebody else.
Uh, Mr. Pratt, you want to come on up and and introduce your members that you're looking to? Have us interview.
Chris Pratt, one fifty-two, Berkshire. I have Dennis Clark, very apt here.
So they're here to state why they want to be reappointed.
Correct.
And they are in consideration with the met, the people who applied for the. Open space subcommittee, whether they are going to be raised somewhere as well.
Okay.
Why would you want to stay on the conservation commission?
Well, I was just reappointed last year back onto the conservation commission, and I enjoy being on the conservation commission. I've been on it for over twenty years. It's part of who I am. I grew up. Um, enjoying the outdoors, and I like to see that it's taken care of, and I like to be proactive at doing that. Um, so I figure a spot on the conservation commission would help me to be able to do just that. I've done uh extensive work in environmental education, um. Have a great background as far as knowledge of the area. I've worked with the state several times. And preserving land, understanding the regulations and bylaws of the land, and what we can do with wetlands, so.
Any questions?
I. I needed to hear what his reason for being, wanting to be reappointed was.
Same as always.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, good, Mr. Pratt. Mr. Clark.
Good evening.
Why are you only saying the conservation?
Normally I blame it on my wife, see.
We just appointed her to something else.
Um, I come from a small town, Feeding Hills, it was a farming community. Grew up in Feeding Hills, and then we had a brook in our backyard, had frogs in it, we'd play in there. And one day went out there and there was shiny colors, rainbow colors in the brook and the frogs were just laying there dead. And uh I followed upstream and there was a subdivision that had gone in and they were dumping all their stuff and it got into the brook. So when we bought a place in Southwick, I told my wife, oh, there's a brook on the property, I hope something doesn't happen. She goes, well. You don't want to be like your father, just sit around and complain about it. Why don't you do something? Why don't you get on a board? So that's when I applied uh twenty-three years ago to get on the commission. And I served as conservation commission coordinator for over twenty years. So I have a little bit of experience and I do feel a civic obligation, and conservation is close to my heart, so.
All right, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi folks, Jerry Patria, Two Shore Road. And I'm assuming the question is the same. Okay, I've uh I've been on the commission for six years now. I was recruited to get on and I have really enjoyed it. Formerly being on the sewer committee for twenty eight years, this was a little more interesting, so we. We learned a few things and I found out about the Wetland Protection Act and and the different thing that the guys are doing. And uh gone on a bunch of site visits and really enjoyed just learning about the environment and different things, uh. Couple of really good teachers over here, so I've uh just kind of enjoyed the camaraderie, learning things, being with them, doing site visits. Things like that, something new for me. I'm an engineer by trade, so this was uh kind of a diversion for me and. I live on the lake, been there forty six years, so it's near and dear to my heart. And uh you know, the wetlands are kind of an extension of the lake, so gotten to see a lot of good stuff. So why not continue? That's the way I look at it.
No, nothing from me.
Nothing from you? Alright.
Thanks folks.
So I'm gonna actually just just bring something up here, so um. Since we've got on the, since I've been on the board, I've found the whole appointment thing to be quite interesting. And it's always turned into this kind of craziness, so um. I asked Nicole how things were done, where she was before, I've looked around at some other things. And I'd, it's part of, Nicole and I have talked about this appointment process and. And sorting it out, I know you're working on it and you pretty much got there, right?
I I've left it to Diane and Lisa.
Okay, so um and I know you, I've given you my input on all that stuff, so. This is, and if you guys can disagree with me on this one, my philosophy on this whole thing. Is if we've got members that wanna be on a committee or uh if if there's, unless there's a pressing reason. I don't wanna remove members from boards and conservation uh commissions personally, that's just the way I feel. Um, you know, and. I I just wanted to let that be known, wh- whether it it's a popular decision or not, or a popular position. But um I just looked around and I I just. And that's just the way I feel, so I wanted to express that, um. And we'll go from here and I guess if we'd like to appoint, I would be looking for a motion to appoint.
Um make a motion to appoint. These are all three year now, right? Just a second.
Triple check.
So you're all three year. All regular members, correct?
Correct.
Now you are. Dennis was spilling a term, so you're all three years. Alright, I will make a motion to appoint Chris Pratt, Dennis Clark and Jerry Patria. To the conservation commission for the term of seven one twenty four through six thirty twenty seven. That was my motion.
Second, roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Fangel, aye.
Doug Mogan, abstain.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, gentlemen. So now we need to discuss and vote on the open space committee reinstatement.
So I asked Sabrina. Um you know, to give us a little synopsis, what she's done and it's in your packet. Um on reinstating it because it was a committee, so it wouldn't be a new committee, it was once a committee. So if you. Looked at that. Any questions? And then I also surveyed my listserv who came back with some. You know, the ones that do have open space committees, who's on them and who they are, you know, basically under who they report to.
Just give me a second and still on the other thing making my notes. Okay, so on this, the majority of your contexts. That they reported to the select board.
A majority of the news.
And our. Protocols, our. I guess that's our protocols, also say they report to the select board. This indicates they are looking for it to report to them. While I agree, we don't have firsthand intervention, let's say, on the land management. I guess I wouldn't wanna break with that protocol either. And I would have it report to the select board as well. As are all others, we appoint all of the others that are not elected. I I see the objectives. I just question, is there a priority to those objectives? What's the most important function you're looking for?
I think they're all pretty much prioritized, I mean, the way they are.
The way they're listed here, that's the.
They're all very highly prioritized, I mean, they're all important. What I would like to see happen is maybe a working open space plan. Where it's kind of like a live document, where it's updated as we go along, so. And the fifth year, we're not struggling and pushing together to find information to throw into that document. Uh I was hoping that that committee could.
So you'd keep updating it as you. You'd keep updating it as you accomplish.
I would like to see that happen, correct? As we go, as it goes along. You know, I also like to have those people, they're making a commitment. Be part of conservation or part of open space conservation in town. So that they get maybe first choice, if somebody does leave conservation, they'd be high up on the list of if they wanna take over. You know, they would be able to take um courses or trainings. In order to understand about the state regulations and our local bylaws. So they'd be prepared when they first come on, instead of having to be like a year or two year learning process as they go along and come across. Different types of plans. Um exposure is pretty much how people learn, they come on besides those trainings.
Take take over that. Is there a budget for that open space and recreation plan? Or or is, how does that come together? How did that come together in the past?
Either a grant from Pioneer Valley and then was part of it and then there's usually a budget appropriation in every fifty year for as part of the OSRP, I believe.
I believe that's every five years needs to be updated, I think for.
We're coming up on it, right? And having the OSRP puts you in contention for certain other grants, if you don't have one, you can't apply.
So would the secretary be paid from a grant? Or does that come into the staff position?
Sometimes they have grants for that, but last year the call from, last time we did it, the call from Pioneer Valley was thirty two thousand dollars. For open space plan, we were able to do it for five thousand in-house. Including all the maps that we provided, both of them was for maps. But you send it to Pioneer Valley, they really don't know that much about this town and they come and ask us about it anyway, so. Really doesn't make that much.
You don't have to.
Have them there for advisors.
You don't have to sell me on using consultants or not. I'm a not. Okay.
I don't have any questions, um actually the questions, Mister Mogan actually. Made my decision easier, I was sitting on the fence on this one.
I'd say anything.
I talked about grants and how things were funded, that was my concerns as well, so that makes a big difference for me. So. If we're at the point where we can vote to re uh reinstate it, I I mean, I'm not opposed to doing that.
I think the only, I do wanna chime in one thing, I thought I might have said the quiet part out loud or something and you heard me. No, I just think as part of the OSRP, that there's other stakeholders in the OSRP than. Strictly conservation, so no matter what. The board decides to do as far as and and Chris, I hundred percent agree with you as far as. The premise here, the question is the mechanics of it, and that was the same thing as it was two weeks ago. I I really think you guys should do it. And I I don't, just don't know how it should be structured, whether it needs to be a formal committee or an ad hoc working group. That is not bound by the open meeting law, that you guys can get together and have a little group that gets together and advises the conservation commission on what you wanna do. So Fennelstee or North Pond or this or that, the other, but then when it comes time to do the OSRP. You're gonna need representation from other boards and commissions that have a have a stake in that. And a hundred percent, I think that the and.
But I think it'd be up to Nicole to designate what kind of committees, what you know, how it's gonna be run out of the town.
Well, we can determine what the membership is.
See it as, how it being a formal committee is, those people are making commitments. If they're not coming together on a regular basis, they might come, they might not come, they might not be informed. But they fall off the.
Right, and I get I. It's a good point, and cause I I hundred percent agree that whether it's on the. Formerly on the police department with reserve officers, crawl officers on the fire department, the planning board associate, having that bench. Is so important to have people to be able to move into different roles. So I really do, I support it, I just wanna make sure that. Eh eh that it it's gonna do what we want it to do and that you can put people to give as much or as. As much or as little as they can afford to give and I don't wanna turn anyone away from supporting town, I also wanna have a a committee of twenty people, it means you gotta have ten.
Meeting and give their opinions just like they do here.
Hundred percent.
The able, being able to update it as we go along, I think is an important aspect of this. Um now we have a town, a new town plan that we wanna put together, a lot of that's gonna be going into this, so you're right, there are a lot of stakeholders. The town are the stakeholders, it's not just conservation, well understood. It would be great to have at the time, recording that final document together to, you know, have people from other boards come in. You know, give input and and take part, it's not, that's not a problem.
If Dave Spina was on the last one, sorry.
Right, right, right.
As far as managing land is part of the open space committee, I think that would be proactive as well as, you know, letting us know what problems are out there. When they go out and survey the land.
So what's your recommendation for structure?
I have no idea at this point, I I. Cause I think the OSRP piece, I think it almost needs to be a separate subcommittee altogether, cause it was last time, cause of how it's gotta have a member of a couple different groups. And but from the land management and it kind of develop an open space plan or and a continually updated open space plan. That's different than the OSRP formally, but it's a key component. It's almost like we did the master planning, had the housing production plan, part parcel of it, it was kind of a nice adjunct, cause it worked very well together. Plus Marcus is here, so um. You know, I think that what Chris is saying is kind of right along, is right up that kinda alley, so if you wanted to, you know. I was thinking more along the lines of what like what lake management does, right?
And that's where my.
Kind of an ad hoc advisory committee and it. It it technically advises all the other boards. Via it via its appointing authority, which is the select board. So. I don't have any beef with it.
That's where my thoughts were, it was, I was just gonna say, it's it's just like lake management.
In a way.
They do their thing and report it back to who needs to have it. And those are.
Are you shaking your yes or no? I couldn't tell. You're still going like.
You're very flexible. I think, I don't think we're in disagreement here, I I I agree, I support the idea in concept, it was just the how and I did. That's fine, let's just go ahead then.
With three year terms, do three twos and ones or just make it one year terms and keep.
I would just do them once and you can reappoint it, cause then if somebody comes and goes, you can just do them once.
Alright, so I will make a motion to create an open space.
Management and planning committee.
Management and planning committee. For one year terms.
Like people?
But.
What we have, I think we have seven before, but I think five.
You can have and up to up to three associates too, cause then you you can work the quorum thing that way.
So that was a joint motion, so. Up to five members and two associates, is that what you said? That you said?
Three, and uh, oh, no, two, yeah, cause you gotta.
For one year, for one year terms. That was the motion.
That was a motion? Did we get an extra second?
No, second.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Fangel, aye.
Doug Mogan, yes.
Alright, so now we had interviewed some people who were interested in that.
What was it?
Connor Flurry.
Yeah.
Flurry excavation.
Awesome.
Um.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Well, he's the only one, cause well.
There was one other one.
Genda Petro, but she's really ag. And if that weren't available, this, so we have Connor Flurry right now. So do we.
We should put him on, make her the chair, she's especially.
So I'm gonna make a motion to, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Connor Flurry to the newly.
Second.
Form.
Roll call vote, Jason Peron, aye.
Fangel, aye.
Doug Mogan, yes, and we, and if I may, we should continue to post or. Socialize that we would like and let them do it too, it's really gonna be very supportive of them.
I'm gonna tell them.
And uh.
So then they have to recruit.
Uh do you are not doing?
Hey, can I go back one? I I promise to keep this to thirty seconds or less. Uh I'm gonna respectfully disagree with you on the nature of appointments, there is no expectation of reappointment. And uh I've been to hell and back over it and and I think it's also. Some of the trials and tribulations that we're still having with. Appointment terms and appointment this and appointment that is kind of indicative of. Process has always been a little bit problematic, we get a little bit better every year, so compared to where we were three years ago, we're in a much better place. Uh so, um but there are times and that's part of the responsibility. And the authority that comes with that responsibility of being elected to this board. But via policy is administered through the appointment process, and then it goes with any administration, you get a new governor, you get all new people in all these different. You know, spots, same thing on the select board, so it's not always an expectation of. And and you may have folks that, and uh that is certainly not the case here, and to be clear before anybody misconstrues. But there are times where there are folks on boards that there are. Better folks to be put on those boards to move forward the town, in in your opinion, as an elected. Uh representative that duly elected to make those difficult choices and difficult decisions. We're very fortunate that we have a very good group of people that serve our town, a lot of people that have been doing it for a long, long time. Um. But it's also worth a look when you get someone who comes out that, you know, that brings a unique perspective or a unique set of talents to a position and. And and you have to make a tough choice and unfortunately for. For you, you know, you sitting up here, that's sometimes a decision you have to make, so.
To make that decision, it's like you said, to me, I I I'm, me and Nicole have been talking and working on this. S- streamlining the appointment, but you know, putting some more concrete things in place, that makes it easier on us.
You're talking about two different things really, what what you what you started with was you don't really wanna not reappoint people.
Right.
If we have a problem with somebody on a board, it is our responsibility to have discussion with those people or take some action prior to.
We had a few early.
And that's what we have, that is what we have been refining.
And in theory, you know, and 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 not just in theory, it's in our protocol that it's, you know, it's apolitical, it's people who wanna serve the town.
Yeah.
But you know, there are. But you know, there are times when just strategically
I brought a letter to you guys where there's some action needed on a particular board. That's what we have
I probably expressed it a little bit wrong.
And it's all good. And that's why we're here to have these kinds of discussions and you know, like, we've done a pretty remarkable job over the last
We filled a lot of
Couple of years doing this job. And even when we agree to disagree, we come to some form of consensus and generally make a decent decision in the end. So I just wanted, you know, and I was very big on this a few years ago, you know. You know, there is no expect, you know, there was, the term was bandied about it, but someone was removed.
It's in the protocol.
But that's not actually, that's actually incorrect, factually incorrect. When your term is up, your term is up. And you you could be appointed, reappointed, which that's the technical term, but you're appointed to a new term. But when your term is up, you have no real expectation other than based on your performance that you put forward, like Mr. Pratt did tonight. He said, look, I've been doing this a long time. I think I do a pretty good job. Okay, that's, that's his argument for being reappointed. And, and okay, he's reappointed. So that's, you know, a good thing.
Do you think letters aren't good enough?
I, I just think it's worth coming, you know, for once, if, if, especially if someone wants to be on, if someone else wanted to be on that committee, and I'm not picking, again, I'm, I'm, no disrespect to Mr. Pratt at all. Or anyone else who just reappointed. But if someone else came in and said, look, I'm a doctor of this and I have this kind of experience and I wrote the Wetland Protection Act and I just moved to Southwick.
I would reconsider.
I might have a really interesting discussion with that person about how they could best serve the town. And we, this is what we did with Mr. Flurry as well, is anyone who, and I, you know, I've been doing this since even when I was first elected to the select board is, I don't care if it's at a Rotary Dinner or if it's at, you know, at a softball game. Hey, you want to serve the town? Let me find a place for you. Come, please come, we'll find you a spot, right? And you know, I've been criticized for it in the past, but that's our job, I think. And I think to get people to come out and, you know, I, I said it with quite a bit of pride on the, on the high-speed internet, every single person on that board it's, which is an ad hoc advisory board to this, was brand new, never served on a board or commission in the town of Southwick. Huge amount of work, because now you got a huge learning curve as the chair, right? To kind of get everybody going with what all the processes are. But huge, you know, to me, it was very interesting with the number of unique perspectives that it brought and no encumbrance of kind of history of town hall, right? Sometimes you have to slow their role just because of how things roll. But I think, you know, Mr. Flurry came in, we could easily you know, not appointed someone else here and put him on. And I think, you know, aside the hate mail and death threats, it would have been fine. But you know, this is great too.
Yeah, it was, it was more structured along the lines of, you know, simplifying and, you know, we, like you said, you've dealt with so much stuff. And it was, by all means, like I said, pressing means I should have said, no, someone that deserves, well, not deserves, but hey, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing. You know, absolutely, I'm not opposed to that at all.
Right.
And that's, that's why we put in the Board and Commission Handbook, and there's a peer review thing that they can opt to do before we have to not reappoint somebody. But before we didn't, I would want their input.
Absolutely.
The chair's input, but
Yep.
So.
Okay, okay. So we've both, we've all set our pace.
So he were not doing.
Speaking of the HSICIMA.
Yep, you just said that.
We're meeting Thursday. And I would, I would hope to, actually, I request now a placeholder on the agenda for our next meeting. Very good. If not there, if you want to put a certain time, but we got to make a presentation to you.
Which you're going to send to us in advance.
I hope so. We're meeting on Thursday, so you may be getting it Monday, Sunday.
P Mogul, I'm waiting on my letters. I told everybody what's going on with that. Other old business, I have none.
I think I just saw today, we're still trying to get a date for the MPIC joint meeting with the planning board to determine their roles and responsibilities. And at that same one, we'll do the planning board alternate appointment. We're not quite done with appointments. Yes, okay. And I was curious where you were with LPP. Did you meet one more time with them?
He was not available next week or last week. I did, we were emailing this morning. I have not gotten my email back from him yet. The plan is to try and meet this week and get that, you know, he, he completely understands where we're coming from and I he completely, he knows. So we're, they're definitely open to not leaving it as what it was and that's the only way it's going to fly. So so we're still working on it. Me and Norm are going to meet with him and
So just reviewing that's general law, it's not going to happen. On chapter forty HC, the Conservation Commission and its own charter from the state that it is responsible for the protection of the watershed resources of said city or town that adopts it. It's all about this master plan and actions towards those things. And there's no way that a suffield person is going to be able to
That's what I want.
Take up
I could not find this definitive answer on that.
Can you just cite chapter forty, section eight C? There's no way we're going to give up the position of a resident to make those decisions for our master
That was one of the questions I could not answer for him and I could not find it and I'm glad you did.
And this commission can, may receive gifts, the quests, or other devices of personal property or interests to make, to do their duty here. And there's no way that another town can vote on the receipt or gifts of acquisition for land in another town. So. It happens.
Well, you guys completely missed my, putting a guy on the suffield
Oh, I got it. I caught it.
Putting that drainage on our land.
Short though, you can let them make the recommendation for the appointees on LMC. Right now, the people on LMC are, you know, like these guys, they've been there for thirty years. Perhaps Suffield wants to recommend its appointees to the LMC.
Well, that'll be
And then give some, and then give some respect to the LMC members that they have appointed to bring that information back to them.
That's a good counter proposal. I think they pretty much put that the kind of thing wasn't going to be a no, nonstarter. So that's why, that's really why we're meeting and see where we can come up with that.
Again, nothing else, all this.
Mr. Mogul?
Nope.
Nicole?
No.
Any other, Nadine?
Nope.
Alright, so we need to, minutes.
Yeah.
Topic seven, acknowledged payroll and payable warrants. Topic A is valid payroll warrant number two, five, zero, six, dated nine, ten, twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Acknowledged payables warrant number two, five, zero, seven, B, dated nine, seventeen, twenty, twenty-four, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. And at this point, we are going to be looking to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares to reconvene, or we are not reconvening.
We are.
Yes.
We are going to reconvene?
Back into open session.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Second, roll call vote, Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.